Hi Jenny.
Hello.
Are you in the conference room?
Hello. Um, yes, I am, and thank you for talking because the projector is also and we are live on YouTube, by the way, so hold on.
Okay.
Yes, I am, and thank you for talking because the projector is also and we are live on YouTube. Hello.
Hello. So it's delayed, huh?
What is delayed?
Well, I heard our conversation when you walked off the screen.
Yeah, I thought you meant the meeting. I was like, no, I didn't hear that. Oh, man. Okay, Carol, I'm going dark.
Okay, I'm gonna go dark now, too.
Okay. Carol, you needed something? We're on YouTube livestream.
Yeah.
Carol, did you just talk to me?
Yeah, are people not logging on then via Zoom?
Yeah, it's not seven yet.
Oh, well, like John and.
It's not seven yet, Carol. We're getting on there.
Okay.
Hi Nathan. Oh, you can't see me.
Hello.
How are you Nathan?
I'm good.
Are you all good for sharing your presentation or would you like me to do that?
Uh, I think I'm good. I've got experience with Zoom.
Okay, great. Just, just so you know, we are live on YouTube livestream already, so, okay?
Okay.
Good luck.
Uh, should I stop or is that gonna be late in the meeting?
No, Nathan, can you go? I can hear that call. We're gonna, we have to go through a finance committee at the whole meeting first and then we have to start our meeting, so I'll introduce you, but it may be about half hour before you go on, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Hi Ron.
Hi.
Hi Ron, how you doing?
Good, how are you guys?
Okay. Great. Nope.
Can you turn your computer volume down? But you shouldn't be able to hear anything.
Now you guys are echoing.
Yep. Hold please.
We had a last minute change, change to Zoom, Ron. Commissioner issues.
Yeah. I will, uh, in full disclosure, tell you guys that any client that asked me to do a Zoom meeting, my answer is no, I'm not doing it. So when you're guys was in person, I'm like, okay, I can do that one. And then it switched to Zoom and I'm like, I can't bail now, so.
Sorry about that. Literally came morning with a commissioner who was not well and then another commissioner traveling, so, and we're down one commissioner, a commissioner resigned that just took office, so. So thank you for doing it tonight. I appreciate it.
That's okay. I just, I don't think I'm very good on Zoom in a board meeting, but we'll see how it goes. I'll do my best.
Hopefully it'll be a quick one. That's all you can do, Ron.
Right. How many days do you have left, Carol?
Uh, 10 workdays.
10 workdays.
Yeah.
You need teary eyes or?
Not even 10. What's that?
Need teary eyes or?
Oh, no.
No.
No. Nope. I'm ready.
Yeah, good for you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hey Lisa.
Hi Carol, oh my goodness. I knew you'll be joining us just for funsies in the future.
No, I don't think so, but tonight's my last board meeting, Ron. Thanks Lisa. Yeah, I'll miss you guys.
And you know, we will miss you, but you know, we'll, we'll be hearing all about your adventures. How's that?
Okay, that sounds good.
You have a, do you have a trip planned? Do you have something to kind of mark the occasion?
You know what, after three weeks of just some R and R at the end of July going to Seattle, so.
Oh, that's not.
Peg has never been and that's, that'll be the first trip. Then it's go in September for some wine tasting and here and there planned and sprinkled in.
You know, it isn't, it's, it still hasn't yet become completely optimal to travel, although I'm glad Mike will say here because he would say, oh, yes, it is. Get on a plane, but having traveled and I'm, I'm going to DC tomorrow, eh, you know, things aren't quite what they need to be everywhere.
Really?
It's okay to kind of ease back into it.
Mm-hmm. So. Yeah, I have not traveled at all, other than going to visit my dad in Baroda, which is like a two hour trip, so.
Oh, wow.
Just kind of been staying put here.
Yep, and you know what? It's not a bad place to be for the summer.
Nope, not at all.
Not at all.
A reminder for anyone who doesn't see up in the left, left hand corner, we are live on YouTube.
All right, so who do we have here so far? We have.
We're waiting for Stephanie.
Stephanie, okay. Once, oh, here she comes.
Oh.
Michael Colby's was traveling back from business and he is, his plane is delayed, so he'll join us as soon as he can. So that means Lisa Brooks is gonna be, President Brooks is gonna be leading the finance committee of the whole meeting once we are ready to start. Um, Nathan, you don't come in until the regular board meeting, so you're, it'll be a little bit before you, we, it's time for you to come on our agenda, just so you know, okay? So I'll announce you when you're ready, but you're gonna listen to some riveting accounting.
Oh.
So you'll learn so much.
Lucky day, yes.
Lucky, lucky day. So maybe you want to go, maybe you like finance, you know? All right.
You never know.
So it is 7 o'clock, so we can start now?
Great. So Lisa, would you do your little opening?
Yes.
Yes.
Can all commissioners see and hear me? If you can, please give me a big thumbs up. All right, all my members of the public seeing here, the ones on the Zoom, can you give me a thumbs up? Perfect. Chris, can you hear me? Bobby? Aaron? Okay, perfect. Um, this meeting is being recorded. Once President Brooks asks me to call the roll, indicate you are here as well as permission to record by verbally stating here, permission to record. Okay, turn it over to you Lisa.
Thank you. I call the June 15th, 2021 Finance Committee of the Whole Meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and note the time.
It is 7:01. Member Boren?
Yes, permission to record.
Great. Member Colby is absent. Uh, member Schneider?
Permission to record.
Thank you. And, um, um, President Brooks?
Uh, here, permission to record. It is our practice not to address questions at this time, however, we will take comments under advisement. Is there anyone who would like to make a verbal comment? If so, please limit comments to three minutes per person. Okay, I will take that as a no. Carol, we will move now to the discussion of fiscal year 2021 Annual Audit Report Management Letter. Carol will introduce Ron Aiman, Managing Partner of our audit firm, Lauterback and Aiman, who will give a presentation followed by answering any questions from the board. Please review Carol's response to the audit report and management letter. The committee should reach consensus to have this item approved at the regular board meeting later tonight.
Well, without further ado, I will introduce Ron Aiman, who for most of you might be up in the upper top row of your Zoom. Ron is the managing of Lauterback and Aiman. And I will turn it over to you, Ron, to give a brief overview of our audit report, the audit process. Um, it was definitely an interesting year. In COVID, seems like we finished fieldwork last year's audit right as we were doing the shutdown, and so it seems only appropriate that you're giving the report for now as coming out of COVID, so take it away, Ron.
Okay, I think I'll hopefully not say this too many times tonight, but thanks Carol for the last time. So as Carol alluded to, it's, the audit process has been different for the last year and a half for auditing firms. The assurance I need to make sure that the board and staff is aware of is that we're still required to do the same thing, but how we get through the audit has been very unique and different for the last couple of years. But the assurances are still there that our job is very singular is to issue an audit opinion. And that opinion is on page five and six of your annual financial report. And once again, the Park District opinion is clean or unmodified, which is the highest and the only opinion that you want from your auditors. So that is our job. How we get there the last couple of cycles, like I said, is different. But we have a lot of good cooperation, as we've always had from staff, in particular Carol, to do a lot of this work remotely. Our staff did show up on site to do some of the testing that we are able to do with files and stuff that's just harder to do electronically. So in the financial numbers, I'm just gonna point out a couple pages on page 19 of the report that we issued is what we call a statement of activities. That statement of activities is on the accrual, uh, full accrual basis of accounting. And the most important number on that page is the third line up from the bottom, and it shows that they change in that position for the Park District for the 12 months ended was an increase of $2.8 million. So a very positive increase in the fund balance for the 12 months ended. From there, I'm gonna go to page 25 and 26 of the annual financial report. These two pages is how the Park District budgets. It's how you operate on a daily basis. It's in line with the same level of accounting that the Park District does for any of the monthly board reports. It's what auditors called modified accrual accounting. And once again, the important line on those two pages is the third lineup from the bottom where it says a net change in fund balance. And then in the far right column, the third lineup shows an increase of just over $5 million. So if we flip the page and go to page 27, um, there's a reconciliation between those two numbers I just talked about. The top of the page starts at what we call the full accrual base of accounting of the 5 million. And then you can see the adjustments that happened during the audit process to get us down to the $2.8 million. So normally in government, it's long-term assets and liabilities that affect the change. So things like fixed assets and things like debt are the two big components of how those numbers reconcile between the full accrual and the modified accrual base of accounting. The last page I'm gonna point out, and the number I want to point out is on page 59 and 60 of the annual financial report. And it's related to the IMRF, and you'll see in the last column on the far right that the Park District at the end of the cycle which was audited for IMRF, it's 95% funded for your IMRF, so a very positive number of 95% funded. What does that mean? It means in the future that whatever you've contributed to IMRF in the past probably won't fluctuate mo- much as long as your, their target is to use these smoothing mechanisms to get you close to 100%. And since you're at 95%, the idea of what the Park District contribution rate going forward should be relatively the same as what it's been in the last couple of years. So from there, I'll take any questions about the audit, the audit process, or any of the numbers I just talked about.
Um, Ryan, you might want, we had no management letter this year, too, just to highlight that for the second year in a row, so. That's always something that I take personal as far as are they finding things that are recommendations for us to follow, so I feel good that for the second year in a row, there is not a management letter.
Right. It's very tricky for auditors in today's world because our industry keeps evolving and changing and letting us do certain things and not do certain things, and our firm takes the management letter very seriously. So to go two cycles in a row and not have some of the ideas of what we look at and assess, which is a very important word in the audit process of your internal control structure, but to not have a management letter which in context means significant deficiencies, you know, it's a tribute to staff and the operations internally of how the Park District operates, so that's an applause to staff. And then the idea of how the board operates related to things that we do monitor and assess during our, our control process of the audit, so.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
I have, I have one question, and we don't have to answer it now, you'll probably get there eventually, but I'm on page 98, and I'm sure the, the numbers work out, but the the, I'm sorry, it's page 99. There's a line percent of legal debt margin to bonded debt limit. And I just noticed in the past, it's gone up or down at, you know, maybe 2% or so per year, sort of a big jump in 2018, but it just looked like a big drop of going from 78% to 66% over a year. I'm sure that's in the numbers, and so sometime this evening, it'd be great if somebody could just point out the math or give me the big drivers behind that.
I mean, I can walk you through real quickly. The, the top line is the equalized assessed valuation of, and we get that directly from the county. And then the way there's two different calculations on that page, kind of the top piece is a debt limit, which is set by state statute at the state of Illinois level, which is 2.875%. So it's just simple math of taking your EAV times the 2.875% and then you minus any debt that you have outstanding. So you can see what's happened to your EAV over the last, you know, 10 year cycle. Obviously a dip there in the middle. And then as your EAV keeps going up, the legal debt margin would, would mirror that and go up because it's just a simple calculation of math. And then the second calculation is rough, non-referendum debt, and once again, it's just state statute driven. Um, and that's kind of the bottom piece of that page where it's a multiplier of point seven or 575. So once again, you just take your EAV times point 575 and subtract out any of the debt that's applicable to that. So it's just simple math of state statute limitations.
Right, yeah.
Then just to add in there Bart, or recall that we issued $4.3 million in October, so we've, we've increased our debt, which is gonna affect those calculations.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that move the number? Well, I don't get, it seemed like it would move it the other way. They'd be closer to a debt limit if you issued more, but I don't wanna get bogged down here. The, the, you know, answer was, was Ron's answer was helpful. So I'm, I'm good. Actually, I have one other real quick question. There's, and this is my first time going through non-corporate accounting, but there are numbers here related to government operations. Which government entities are included or not included? I'm assuming the library and the village are, is that right? Or, or what's, what's included in those?
This is only the Park District.
Okay, okay, yeah, I would, I couldn't, I couldn't understand the, the, I thought there was some total government number, so I misread that. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I'm sure Michael would have questions. Unfortunately, he is, uh, I'm sure frantically trying to get all, and I told him to just be zen and, and it'll all be okay. He can certainly ask those questions of you, Carol.
Absolutely.
Um, and John as well. I'm sure both of you can, can answer any of his, his questions. Does anyone else have questions for our visitor? Nothing? Okay, all right. Thank you, mister. Is it? I'm sure it's not Amen, so I am thinking it's Aiman.
That's correct.
Very nice.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Aiman. Thank you. All right, um, so.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you so much. You can sign off. We appreciate it. I'm sure we'll see you next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, as Chair, I direct staff in Michael's place. As Chair, I direct staff based on the discussion of the committee to move the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual audit forward to accept it at the June 15th regular board meeting, which will be in just a bit. And now we will move on to our discussion on reserve, a portion of current fund balance for future capital. As master plan projects move forward, staff believes it is important to designate fund balance for future capital projects. The committee should reach consensus to have this item approved at the July 20th regular board meeting. Following reserve fund balance for future capital discussion and recommended step. Okay, so are we going to have the discussion now?
Yep.
Yes.
Carol. So as you know, with the exception of our COVID year, due to the excess fund balances that we have in corporate and rec, we always commit a portion to try and will it down to the 50, 55%, which still leaves it a little comfortable for us to operate. Thankfully, we have the high fund balances in the era of COVID still impacting us. And so last year, we did not make any transfer because the shutdown was March, the audit was accepted in June, and we just thought to be safe, we needed to not do any transfer from corporate or rec to Fund 69. So then we issued the bonds in October, and we know we're set with four and a half million dollars for projects over the next three years. Then found out we had the park grant, so I think it's important, as we talked about in the budget process, that we try to still make a transfer from at least corporate to Fund 69 to continue to fund those projects that are gonna be out there outside of the park grant, the Watts project. So recreation really kind of, we didn't want to touch it just yet because programs are still starting to come back to fruition. They were impacted by having 1.5, 1.6 million less in revenue. And so we decided to wait on the recreation fund transfer. But I am proposing a resolution. I put the sample in your packet for a transfer from corporate to Fund 69 of $300,000. It will make a minimal impact to the fund balance levels. I still feel like they're appropriate. And suggest that the board might want to take another look at doing this before the fiscal year end. I have budgeted a 300,000 transfer to make as soon as to make as soon as the resolution is passed next month. So that has been budgeted. I just say that to just be careful until the end of the fiscal year and take a look at what we might be able to transfer again, either from just rec or from corporate and rec.
Okay, opening it up to the board. Carol, thank you. What you say makes good sense. I was kind of wondering when we were going to do this. So, so what you're proposing is that we make a single corporate transfer of 300,000 now with tabling any potential future transfer from rec and/or more from corporate, correct?
Correct. Until the end of the fiscal year, we can take a closer look at the operations.
Okay, so in the new year, we'll make a look before the March
Yes.
New Year. Okay. I'm, I'm, that makes absolute sense to me. Does any other commissioner, well, does anyone else, Bart's very future commissioner, does anyone have any other thoughts on this?
Just wanted to note really quick for the record, at 7:16, Michael Colby joined the meeting. And Michael, can you just give us permission to record?
Permission to record, and thank you for notifying everyone.
Great. You're a little fuzzy, but we'll, we'll get through this.
Thank you, Michael. You sound like you're in like a Star Wars movie or something.
I am in a Star Wars movie. Permission to record.
Does anybody have any follow-up questions for this?
No, I think it makes sense.
I have, I have one question, and it's just again, trying to understand the, the accounting, which is so different than corporate accounting. So I understand this is, this is money that we're transferring and separating, and it can be used for future projects. So I assume it's, it's future capital projects that come along, but it also helps our, our financial ratios. I mean, it's, it's going, and I haven't seen the different types of funds we have before, like the corporate fund or different funds, but it's going somewhere to be held in reserve for a to-be-determined capital expenditure at some point?
Correct. It's being transferred from the corporate slash general fund, and it will go to Fund 69, one of our primary capital accounts that is funded with revenues from excess fund balances from corporate and recreation as well, excuse me, as well as donations, private donations. So the donation that came in for Duke Park is also allocated in Fund 69 as well.
Okay, and that, that means that is unrestricted. At the point a project comes up, it could be used to, to fund that, the capital side of that.
It's restricted. It's committed for capital projects only. So you can't take, unless you do another resolution to uncommit it, you have to use it for a project paid for by Fund 69.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
And the board approves those projects yearly as we go on, so.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
And Michael, just to make your life easy, I'll, I'll do the, if you want to step in, that's great. But if it's easier for you, if I just read, we're almost through here.
It'll be much easier if you take it.
I know. I think you're probably on your phone, and I, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so.
No, it's fine. My fault.
Okay. Filling in for our Chair, I direct staff based on the discussion of the committee to move reserving a portion of current fund balance for future capital forward for approval at the July 20th regular board meeting. Lisa Shepherd, do you have any other business for this evening?
We do not for the Finance Committee Hall. We do not.
Okay, very good. So I entertain a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee of the Hall. Can someone?
Someone?
Michael, you got a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Born?
Yes.
Member Colby?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Motion passes. Very good. Okay, so. I think what we'll do, Lisa, if you need a little time to switch recorders or anything like that, let me know.
I think we are all good to go, right, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Yes. What was that? Okay.
Still coming through.
I, I'm not hearing you, Michael. You were really clear a little bit ago, and now it's, it's not good.
I'm not talking. That was Chris.
Oh.
Did you have something? Okay. All right.
Okay, so then Lisa, can you do your introduction, please?
Sure. So can all commissioners see and hear indicate with a thumbs up for their regular meeting. There we go. Michael, you're there, right? Can all members of the
See and hear.
Oh, I can see I'm on the plane still. Can all members of the public see and hear? Yep. Okay, thank you. The meeting is being recorded. Once President Brooks asks me to call the roll, indicate you are here as well as give permission to record by verbally stating here, permission to record. It's all yours, Lisa.
Very good. I call the June 15th, 2021 regular board meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and note the time.
Great. It's 7:21. Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes, permission to record.
Future Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, permission to record.
All right.
Okay, so consent agenda items A through C are routine. Can I get a motion, recommended motion? Does any commissioner want any item pulled from the consent agenda items?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So move. Second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, it is our practice not to address questions at this time. However, we will take comments under advisement. Is there anyone who would like to make a verbal comment? If so, please limit comments to three minutes per person. And Lisa, if you have anything that you need to read for us tonight?
I do not have any that came in, except I do have one email, the email that's not matters to the public, but this is the goodest time at any to read it to the board. This is from Brandon Hinkle. Hi, Lisa. I regretfully need to send my official resignation from the Park Board. We just found out we are definitely moving out of town. We didn't know for sure until last Thursday, but now it's certain. We officially move on June 10th, though he has left town already. I obviously wish we were, we knew sooner or to save everyone the time and process. Thank you for everything. Please let me know if you need anything from me to facilitate a smooth transition.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes. Very good, but it's definitely good to segue now to our oath of office for Bart, who's been patiently waiting for this moment. And Lisa Shepherd as Board Secretary will administer the oath of office. She'll just give it to you in repeatable segments, Bart, and that's, that should work out fine. So go ahead.
That sounds, that sounds, that's fine. Actually, give me about a 10-second pause here.
Okay.
That's good because Jenny's running in with oath of office right now. You see she left the camera. Thank you, Jenny. Oh, it's in the book.
My dog is back inside, so.
All right, you ready? Put your hand on, put, put your hand on something important.
Okay.
Or you know what, Bart, you can, I did this.
Okay.
Raise your hand. I, Bart Schneider.
I, Bart Schneider.
Having been elected to the Office of Park Commissioner of Glencoe Park District.
Having been elected to the position of Park Commissioner of Glencoe Park District.
Cook County, Illinois.
Cook County, Illinois.
Do hereby solemnly declare and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly declare and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will well. That I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A Park District Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Of Park District Commissioner to the best of my abilities.
That's it. Congratulations. You're officially a commissioner.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
Wonderful. Okay, so, uh, well, and now there are four. I am going to now move to the appointment of a representative and an advisory group chair, another appointment to, as an advisory group chair. The first, it does say Glencoe Sustainability Committee. Lisa, is there, is this also for the Glencoe Plan Commission or?
No, I'm sorry. It's just for the, the, a plan commission. That's it.
Very good. Okay, so I move to appoint myself, Lisa Brooks, as representative to the Glencoe Plan Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Bart. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I now would like to announce the appointment of the Glencoe Beach and Lakefront Advisory Committee. The Chair will be our newly elected Bart Schneider. And that does not require a vote. It's just an announcement. And now for the part we've actually really been excited and waiting for. This is such a treat for us, the presentation of Eagle Scout Project, Nathan Heftman. Lisa Shepherd, if you could do the introduction?
Excellent. Well, Nathan is the young man on the screen. You can see in this spiffy little uniform. So thank you, Nathan, for coming in. Nathan met with Chris Leiner and I about, about a month and a half ago regarding exciting project. So I'm really just going to throw it over to Nathan to give his presentation to the board. I made the screen shareable, so you can share your presentation, Nathan.
All right, thank you very much. Excuse me, one second.
By the way, he does that better than me, so.
Can you see the presentation?
Yep, we sure can. Thank you, Nathan.
Absolutely. This looks good already, man.
Yeah.
So, hello, I'm Nathan Heftman. I just recently graduated from Central School. I am a Life Scout in Boy Scout Troop 28. And I am here to share my plan about the Ravine Bluffs Park Soap Ring Repair. Excuse me. Going to. The project plan is to clean out, fix, and rehabilitate a small stone semicircle of unknown age. Circle is located in Ravine Bluffs Park nestled between the relocated booth cottage that was recently put there. I'd say, I don't know the exact date, sorry, and Green Bay Trail. It's quite close to take a center. Structure is in disrepair and is quite overgrown. My Eagle Scout project plan would include several phases of rehabilitation of the site. Now, the following is a series of images depicting the ring's current state. As one can see, the area is dilapidated. It's in need of cleanup. Series of stumps, branches, and several buckthorn plants dot the area. If you look closer at the stones themselves, you can see lots of areas of disrepair. You can see the cracks. There's bugs. If you lift up the rocks and moss and grime that coat the rocks. It can be found on almost all of the stones, somewhere than others. Now, my goal of the project personally is to both remedy the negative features of the circle while adding new ones that will make it a better contribution to the park. The following is an aerial sketch of how I plan to improve the circle. Now, you can see here at the top, there's the Green Bay Trail dotting the area. The circles are the trees. To the right would be the booth cottage. The squares are the stone circle itself. The shaded area is the woodchips, and the circle is the speaker stone. The woodchips and speaker stone I intend to put in later as part of the project. Now fundraising and recruitment would be the first part of the plan. This would most likely be done through a bake sale or car wash and signing up scouts looking for service hours, which is always a part of our troop. Any excess funds would be donated to the Park District as you guys are the recipients of the project. Once funds are in the store and available, we will begin by organizing volunteers, members of the community, and scouts. Since the project would benefit community and it would be an excellent source of service hours for scouts looking for advancement, I'm quite sure we will have a steady stream of helping hands. Cleaning and removing foliage surrounding the circle itself is the next stage of the plan. This would be done by raking leaves, moving stumps, and then cutting the buckthorn, which troop has experience with through multiple events. I understand that the Park District is a team used for treating cut buckthorn to keep it from regrowing. So once the area is cleaned, we will get into the nitty-gritty of it, which is power washing and finally understanding the full extent of the damage. The circle is covered with moss and grime, as I said before. So when we power wash it, it will most likely uncover some cracks and instability, some of which we can already see. So masonry. Once we know the current condition of the circle, we're going to have a better idea of what we really need to do. This could include simply fixing a few small breaks and sanding edges with the help of a team from the Park District, along with replacing a missing part of the edge with area-appropriate limestone. I've been told the proper limestone is held by the Park District. It could also mean working with a mason with established ties to the Park District. The latter option would obviously entail more work. If we had to do this, it would mean the circle would be severely dilapidated. The final touches of this project would be cleaning up the surroundings. After that, it would be woodchip flooring and a speaker stone. The woodchip flooring, I understand, is the woodchips are supplied by the Park District to the community. And the speaker stone is sort of a small stone podium that is typically used in these council rings, which a speaker will stand on top of to deliver a speech to the circle. It would be a final solution to the project if funds allow. Now, the planned start of the project is about mid-August and lasting about three or four weeks, with the fundraising starting a bit earlier. Scouts in my troop have a lot of experience clearing buckthorn, so they should be perfect for the cleaning phase. I understand the Park District carries several teams of volunteers that connect to groups that could be, since I would work with and lead these groups. Now, this is a page for materials, supplies, and tools. In the top left, you can see the list of materials. Woodchips, which the village routinely, oh yeah, materials are, according to the proposal, things that would become part of the project. So woodchips, I understand the village routinely gives to community, a traditional speaker stone, if we have the remaining funds, which I've already explained. Area-appropriate limestone, which I've been told is in the possession of the Park District. And various masonry supplies like mortar, depending on the extent of the damage, time is taken on the circle. In the top right, you can see supplies. Food and refreshments like pizza and water bottles for the scouts and other volunteers would be a necessity. The chemical used to treat the buckthorn will also be needed. I understand the Park District is licensed to handle this. And trash bags are another method of gathering the foliage and buckthorn at that phase. In the bottom left, you can see the tools for the project. Oh yeah, supplies are things that would be consumed but not added to the project, and tools would be things we would have afterwards. So tools for the project would include rakes, clippers, and saws for removing the foliage, shovels for the same purpose, and working with the woodchips, a hose for watering the woodchips to prevent fungus, power washer, which I know my grandfather has and would be happy to lend us, and various masonry tools depending on the extent of the damage. Tools for fundraising specifically would be if we were to do a car wash, hose, soap buckets, and sponges. And if it was bake sale, table and chairs and baked goods, which would technically be supplies. The expected budget for the project in total would be about $200 for the speaking stone and about $50 for refreshments and trash bags. Everything here concerning tools is already held by the Troop or Park District. So in total, it would be about $250, which I think could be cleared with both the GoFundMe and the bake sale or car wash. The logistics of the plan are quite simple. The park where the project will take place, Ravine Bluffs, downtown Glencoe, and our charter organization, St. Elizabeth's, are all rather close. Should, shouldn't be a problem transporting stored materials from there to the fundraising or project site. The materials we are able to store in the church basement, we will, and those we cannot, we will store in the troop trailer, also to be used as a transport vehicle. The trailer tends to be parked at the take of center about a block away from the project site. Some hazards might include the tools that will be used to clean, including saws and clippers. To negate this, we will ask for those scouts who are experienced and certified to wield the more dangerous tools, but less experienced instead use the rigs and safer cleaning equipment. We will use safety goggles and gloves for this process. Now, does anyone have any questions?
Very nice presentation. You're going to give Chris a run for his money.
Oh, boy, thank you so much. Michael, do you have a question?
I don't. I, I will absolutely say that I was blown away by your presentation skills and your commitment and really, really, just really impressive. My one question is, are you, are you Marcy's kid?
No, I don't. Who's Marcy?
I'm mute. Oh, for sure, she's not.
Sorry, what is, no, what is your mom, is your mom? Sorry, what is, no, what is your mom? Is your mom Michelle or?
My mother's name is Michelle, yes.
You're on mute.
Oh, I.
My wife, my wife knows your mom and you have a very nice family and it clearly see that you are a dedicated member of the community. And it's great. So thank you. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, I have, I have a, too, just listening. I wonder, Lisa, if it's appropriate and if it isn't, I totally understand if we could maybe encourage some eyes on this through our social media channels, you know, because I'm absolutely down with the GoFundMe. But if people know about it, they might be interested. Is there any way that we could use our distribution channel there for getting the word out about this? Or is that not, is that something we could do?
Erin?
Yes, we can do that. Nathan, if you have links that you want to share with us, send it to Lisa or myself.
Presentation to your.
And we meant for like when you're, when you start doing fundraising or GoFundMes, just share those with us and we'll share with the community so we can get a, reach a broader audience.
And if I might encourage Erin having a conversation with Nathan in the future, Erin can, Erin's our publicity person and our marketing person, so she can help frame what we might be able to get out, because we have a pretty wide reach. Some like little soundbite or some little something that might encourage some, you know, people in the community to either donate their time or funds, so.
And we can also share pictures of the progress and some of the volunteers.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Hey, Carol, Carol and/or Bobby, I don't know, could we, could we, having, use a GoFundMe, could we just put them over to the park district ourselves or is that not?
I'm sorry, Michael. Part of their, part of the project is they have to do fundraising to raise funds for it. That's part of the people's job. Yeah.
I hate giving five or 10% to GoFundMe. Could we like put activity, like a $10 activity, $20 activity, $30 activity where people can donate 10, 20, or 30 bucks and we just, we're the conduit. In this way, we're not giving 10% to GoFundMe and get more money for us, for, for him and for the project.
We'll review that to see if we can, and we'll talk it over with Nathan if, if we can do that. It's not a bad idea, so.
In this way, you know, you also put fixed amounts in there and people are likely to give up a little bit as opposed to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, see what we can do. We're also, the park district is donating in-kind support through our staff and Chris's expertise and Bill and, and things like that in our parks team, so.
Yeah.
I have one, one question, since this is a sensitive site with the neighbors there. Do we need to inform them if other people are over there? I assume that the fundraising will not take place on the site. Like if there's a car wash, it won't be over there. I'm assuming that that might be in by the church or downtown Glencoe or some other location. Is that correct?
Yes, typically, when we have a car wash, we do it at the Takeoff Center, and when we have a bake sale, we do it in downtown Glencoe.
Perfect. Okay. And answer your question, yes, Stephanie, we will inform the neighbors before this starts, just like any other project. It is hidden behind the house now, so there shouldn't be that much disruption to the neighbor. And the buckthorn removal is pretty much right behind the house, so it doesn't affect neighbors as much as if you go down the trail. So, but we will let them know that we're doing that as a, as a park district initiative with, with the Boy Scouts and, and Nathan is Eagle Scout, so.
If, I, I have a recollection that we've already, months ago, had some sort of touch point with the neighbors about this as a potential project. I feel like it's not, I mean, I knew about it weeks and weeks ago, so I feel like that's already been out there, but maybe not.
Uh, not really. I think maybe I talked to you about it, but um, we really haven't told the, we, you know, we they can inform them that is behind there, that maybe it'd be a project, but we haven't formally informed the neighbors at all.
Okay, sounds good.
So we would have to do that.
Okay. If there are any other, are there any other questions for Nathan? Okay, Nathan, well done. Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. We look forward to the project getting underway and working in partnership with you. That's fantastic.
So I think he just needs a formal for his thing, just a, just a, not an official vote, but just kind of everybody saying, yeah, we support you and support the park district doing the in-kind support, so.
Okay, so I will start. Yes, I, I, I support you and approve this. Stephanie?
Great, of course.
Bart?
Yes, yes, I, I support this as well. My son, my son's an Eagle Scout and, and he was in Troop 28, so good, good work.
Very nice. And Michael?
100% supportive.
Right. You got it. Okay. Thank you very much, Nathan. Thanks for joining.
Congrats, Nathan. Good job doing this.
Very nice job. You could stay on if you want to listen to riveting park district meeting. We understand if you want to go out and have a nice day.
Nathan, I'll be your first donor too, so make sure I get that website.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, I'm just scrambling here. I'm looking for the next thing I'm supposed to do here. So we are going to move on to, and I've got to look for it, Approval of Resolution Number 924, Anthony Marks' 10 Years Employee Service.
Anthony, you want to put your phone, uh, camera on so we can see you? There he is.
Okay, here, hang on. I'm just looking for where this, oh, it must be, no, not there. Resolutions, got it. Okay, here we go, Anthony. All right, so um, I'm going to read the resolution and then we will have comments. Glencoe Park District, Anthony Marks' 10 Years Service Resolution Number 924. Whereas Anthony Marks was employed by the Glencoe Park District on the staff of the Parks and Facilities Team beginning on May 1, 2011. Through a combination of experience, training, and hard work, Anthony advanced from the position of building maintenance to that of parks laborer, then advanced further to the position of Park Operations Supervisor in 2015. And whereas in realization of his consistent commitment of time, energy, and expertise to the betterment of services and facilities of the district, and whereas Anthony has been a vital part of the Parks and Facilities Team in which he has over the years, provided selfless leadership, innovative thinking, unparalleled commitment, exceedingly hard work, and whereas his service, passion, and skill has been an asset to the Glencoe Park District. And whereas Anthony served the park district during a period of significant challenges and rapid change, including leading his team from the front in providing essential services during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Anthony has served the Glencoe Park District in a loyal and faithful manner for 10 years, and the residents of Glencoe have benefited from his dedication and professionalism as Parks Operations Supervisor, and his knowledge and expertise in the development and regular maintenance of amenities and improvements in various parks and facilities. He has been, been integral in renovating and improving eight playgrounds, Berlin Field, the old Green Bay Trail expansion, and the continual maintenance of the seasonal facilities. His work and leadership aids in stewarding the natural beauty of Glencoe's lake shore, the park system as a whole, and many other contributions too numerous to note. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners, representing all the residents of the park district, recognize the meritorious service of Anthony Marks and record it in the permanent records of the Glencoe Park District for all to see. This resolution shall be in full force and effect, effect immediately upon its passage. Adopted this 15th day of June 2021 pursuant to a roll call vote as follows. Lisa?
Commissioner Born.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colby.
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Schneider.
Yes, approved. Great work.
President Brooks.
Yes, I entertain a motion. Wait, did I do that? Yes, I did. Okay, so.
Did we get a motion in a second?
Oh, I thought we, yeah, okay, right. I entertain a motion to approve Retirement Commemoration Resolution Number, whoops, Resolution Number 924. No, I entertain a motion.
Go back to 924.
Employee Service Resolution Number 924 for Anthony Marks as presented.
Second.
All right, session. Roll call vote, please.
Did we already do it?
Yeah, we did. So a little goofy, but you get the point and congratulations. Where is he on here? There you are, Anthony. Well done.
Do you have anything to say regarding your employee?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Anthony is an unbelievable member of our team and he's one of the people who make things successful from behind the scenes, and we would not have accomplished what we accomplished without him and his leadership. And, you know, oftentimes I think it's folks that are out there in the field that, you know, really make the difference here at the park district, and Anthony is one of those people. His work is able to be seen in every park, just like we said in the resolution, and it's an honor and privilege to work with him and someone of his level of dedication and commitment. So thank you, Anthony.
Anthony is never afraid to take on a project, whatever strange idea that we may come up with, he has built it. The mud run is one fine example of the things he comes with up with every year, including the showers and miniature golf, and there's, there's not any wacky idea. The rec team brings him, usually he can build it. So we are proud to have him as our team and, and with the Glencoe Park District for 10 years. So thank you, Anthony, for your service.
He's also a part of the Employee Appreciation Committee and the Special Events Committee, so he also helps with our holiday party every year and a lot of different aspects that may be beyond the traditional parks role. And he's always. The what?
Chief Beekeeper, yes.
Oh, he is the chief beekeeper. Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. He always brings a new perspective to whatever project we're working at. It's always a pleasure to have his ideas.
Oh, that's, well, we are awfully lucky to have you, and I hope you know we do appreciate you as much as, as your colleagues have expressed. So thank you so much.
Would you like to say anything, Anthony, before you sign off? You, you're never a man with no words. You always have a lot of words.
Thank you.
Well said, well said.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay.
Go home now.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. Okay, so now we will move on to Approval of Resolution Number 925, Carol Mensinger Retirement Commemoration. Okay, so here we go. Carol, I wish we were all together in the room, but Glencoe Park District, Carol Mensinger Retirement Commemorative Resolution Number 925. Whereas Carol Mensinger was employed by the Glencoe Park District as the Director of Finance and Human Resources from August 1991 to November 1992, then again on July 17, 2000, and will retire on June 30, 2021. Whereas in realization of her consistent commitment of time, energy, passion, and expertise to the betterment of services and facilities of the district, whereas her service, dedication, compassion, and leadership abilities have been an asset to the Glencoe Park District through a period of rapid growth of facility and park renovation, technological advancement, a pandemic, and a recession. Whereas Carol was instrumental in passing a referendum and securing funding to build the Takeoff Community Center. Whereas her financial expertise played a vital role in the Glencoe Park District achieving and maintaining a triple A rating. Whereas she assisted us in completing over $35 million of capital projects for the betterment of the district. Whereas Carol was an integral part of the park district team when we were awarded the 2019 NRPA National Gold Medal for Excellence, and we were a finalist for the gold medal in 2017 and 2018. Whereas Carol's contribution to sound policies and practices helped Glencoe Park District become an IPRA, IAPD Distinguished Accredited Agency for the first time in its 100-plus-year history. Whereas due to Carol's careful fiscal stewardship, we were able to weather the COVID-19 pandemic and keep staff employed during the Governor of the State of Illinois Safe-at-Home Order. Whereas Carol has served the Glencoe Park District in a loyal and faithful manner for 20 years, and the residents of Glencoe have benefited from her dedication, professionalism, and other contributions too numerous to note. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners, representing all the residents of the park district, recognize the meritorious service of Carol Mensinger and record it in the permanent records of the Glencoe Park District for all to see. This resolution shall be in full force and in effect immediately upon its passage. Adopted this 15th day of June 2021 pursuant to a roll call vote as follows.
I think I need a motion first and a second?
Yes, I entertain a motion to approve Retirement Commemorate, Commemoration Resolution Number 925 for Carol Mensinger as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colby.
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Oh, yes. Motion passes. Wow.
Wow, wow, wow. That was something. Resolution, and realizing, I, I think when I told Lisa that I was planning to retire, I counted 14 or 15 board meetings to attend. And it's just amazing how quickly the last nine months have gone and how quickly a career has gone by. I'm bummed we're not all together to celebrate. I wore my gold medal outfit. Day we won the gold medal and celebrated to the fullest and such wonderful memories. I really can't believe it's coming to an end, but I'm really looking forward to retirement. Appreciate the board, appreciate all the staff, especially the ones right now that I've worked with that are an amazing A-team. And I know there can continue to be an amazing team and do great things, and the same is the board. Had wonderful supportive boards over the course of my career. And it's been an honor to work at the Glencoe Park District and an honor to work with all of you and all the previous people that I've worked with. It's, it's made me a much better person. And I've enjoyed really pretty much every minute of it with the, with the exception of a couple minutes here and there, but it's been great. And I hope you all are able to come celebrate next week. And I will plan to do a real speech then, but just thank you. It's an honor. I really appreciate the resolution and just all your support over the years. So thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Is it next week already?
It sure is.
Things fly, they fly. I'll save my speech for her retirement party also, but it's been a joy to have Carol as my right-hand woman and right next to me. There was a while there I was thinking about just putting a little, little window in the office so I could just yell at her. She wouldn't let me do it. And so then I just took to throwing balls at the wall when I wanted her attention. That was about five years ago. She threatened to quit, so if I did that anymore, so I stopped that. So then I, I would call her and then she would just yell from her office. She wouldn't pick up her phone. She'd yell at me. So, but it's, it's been a lot of fun and we've done great things together here at the park district. I don't know, when I came in, she's the, she's department head that is the original from when I came. And I knew when I was interviewing that we would make a great team, and she was one of the reasons I came. I called around and said, who are these department heads here? And everybody said, oh, Carol, oh my God, she's great. So she has a reputation throughout the whole industry of being a great finance director. And she's a lot of fun, too. You get her at conferences. I've been laughing because I put out an email to every, all of the North Shore directors and beyond that she was retiring. And they all started sending me back these things like, oh, Carol, she's a lot of fun at conferences. I'll miss her. I'm like, what is she doing at conferences? But she, she works hard and she plays hard, and I know she'll do that in retirement, and I'll miss her, and I'll be calling her just to go to Cubs game or something, but I promise I won't call you about Glencoe Park District stuff that much, so. She's doing a great job training John right now, and she's tired because it's hard, it's hard work. She's not ending coasting through her last month of work, that's for sure. But I know at the end of the day, she'll leave John with great wisdom and, and will carry on, so.
Absolutely. Thanks, Lisa.
So, and she makes a mean popcorn for, oh, I didn't tell John, that's his job. She has to make popcorn at Halloween event. That's, that was her job for years, and you have to wear weird hats. That's, that was her job for years and you have to wear weird hats. You have to do that, too, at Halloween, John. So, she always made it fun. She embraced the rec side of it. Sometimes, you know, finance directors can get a little, you know, stodgy, I guess you could say, and you know.
So, how can finance directors get?
They get kind of boring, but she was never boring. And actually, when we were interviewing John, that was one of the things that we liked about him, too, that he, when we asked, will you go to special events and make popcorn? He said, absolutely. That's why I want to come into Park District. Well, at least that's what I think he said. It may be right between the lines, but that's okay. So, but thank you, Carol, for everything. And, um, and I really wish we were all together, too, for your last board meeting so we could pop the champagne. So, we'll just have to do that next Friday.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you all.
Yeah, Carol is just so bittersweet because we just absolutely, just the thought of you not being there. And when you present, it's always like a sigh of relief. It's like Carol's talking. She's just doing, she's telling us the way things are. But it's bittersweet because John has been such a great new member of the team and, you know.
Absolutely.
You've left us in such good hands that it, you know, it balances out. And of course, we're all just so thrilled that you're going off and living your life the way, you know, we're meant to do. You're meant to work and, and get to this place in your life. So, you know, all good things and best wishes. And of course, we will see you at your going away party.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it from everybody.
Okay, um, that was really kind of sad, but.
Carol, you can't leave, so you have to stay.
I know, I planned on it.
So now we're going to move to something very interesting. We're going to move to the financial report. Three months of the fiscal year is complete. Carol will provide for the very last time a synopsis of the reports. Take it away, Carol.
You know what? As I kind of stated in, uh, in the Finance Committee of the whole meeting, coming out of COVID and what that looks like. And you can see what that looks like in the report that's presented to the board. I had Jenny keep on, actually, two prior years to COVID, then the COVID year of 2020 and our current year of May 2021. And boy, you can really see, you can see the increases in the recreation fund at this point in time compared to the prior years. I mean, we're definitely making progress. We're showing that we're rebounding. Going into the, into the office today and to see all the camp kids and it was just, it hit me. And Stephanie Briskin was out there and she just like, isn't that a great sound? And it is a great sound and the numbers show it. Obviously, the beach where the season passes, I mean, they hit it out of the park. I've never seen this in my career, what it's showing right now. I think it's a great model moving forward for you as the board and staff to determine. But really looks good. I think at the end of the year, based on what we're seeing, based on the daycare surplus that we're seeing right now with the additional grant that Jess Stockle has again secured with Bobby. I think you'll be able to make definitely another inter-fund transfer from corporate and rec again to Fund 69. So, the numbers after three months are looking amazing and I have no reason to believe at this time that they're going to not continue to look that way for the rest of the year. So, great job. It's a kudos to staff.
Those were the same things I noticed. Obviously, they're like, they jump out of you. I know we're supposed to kind of ignore 2020, so keep just going back to 2019. But even that, even with that $85,000, my question is with the daycare, that's still subtracting that $85,000, a good sizable increase. Is that due to us having more kids in the program and/or increased fees or a combination of them?
Yeah, I'll let Bobby answer that.
Great question, Stephanie. So, it's actually taken us about two to three years since the expansion to work through the bottlenecks to maximize the number of participants in each class with the way DCFS allows us to have group sizes. It's very dependent on when the child turns a certain age. So, we have slowly but surely worked through to, to maximize the number of participation. And also, we've had some legacy participants who were part-time from when they enrolled in the program. Those have all aged out. So, we're really, we're at full stride in terms of the program. I don't see much, much gain here other than any increases in price. But we're at, we're at maximum capacity and, and we're just below that 100 participants. If we go over that, we become a super center, which adds all sorts of restrictions. So, we don't have the capacity to go over that 100.
And we also did have money from the grants that we received this year. So, that's, that's also affecting that bottom line that we may not see in the future.
And the beach is just amazing. I mean, the one good thing to come out of COVID really is that that really engaged the residents and had them buy the passes in advance. I know it's a lot of non-residents there as well, but it's pretty amazing.
Well, just developing the, the model that makes people want to buy it, giving them something extra that they can't get out of a daily pass definitely has helped us with that. And I think that the residents and the non-runs alike, the season pass holders are finding great value and, and even a better experience down at the beach. And I think we're even a better neighbor to the houses around us because we're, we're having more manageable crowds.
Yeah.
That, that's helped us, too. So, it's definitely, definitely a model that we should continue and hopefully people find that value important to them.
And one note additionally to make is, so remember, these numbers are as of May 31st. So, that was just including Memorial Weekend, well into June now by two weeks. And we've, we've seen daily fees come in. We've seen rentals come in. So, you'll continue to see, to see revenues grow during the course of the year, which is good to know. It's, it doesn't stop right here just because we've sold the passes as of May 31st. It will grow.
But you'll also see the expenses grow too, right? I mean, like, let's not, let's not, I mean, I think it's great that we have the revenue.
That's always, Michael, but with the passes last year, our, we had no additional revenue after we sold the passes.
We have to remember the expenses will also go up based on weather. So, if you look at the weather, weather right now, we're in a drought. Beautiful, beautiful hot weather. More people going to the beach. We have more guards on. We don't have rain dates where we send staff home. So, Michael's exactly right. You will see our expenses go up in addition to those revenues, but we still think the net will be higher than, than in the past. So, but he's exactly right.
Yeah.
We'll see that. Because we have to provide, we have park ambassadors. We have, you know, more cashiers. We have more staff cleaning in between boat rentals, for example. So, you'll see those expenses also.
Sure. Yeah. I just, I compare everything to 2019. So, the fact is that 2019, the revenue came in a little bit more steady. The revenue and the cost came in a little bit more steady. Now, obviously, in 2019, we didn't have the same amount as revenue. We have a lot more revenue now, but the costs will, uh, will come in.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll, 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 model will look different, but it's so interesting how COVID, uh, COVID required us to, to find a creative solution that was taking a risk that we would have considered in the past but rejected because it was too much of a risk, a risk. This forced us to try this and I think to everyone's surprise, we learned that this is something we, we will do going forward or that we will consider going forward. So, I think it's, it's like a fascinating, the whole thing is just fascinating to me how it all played out. So, I, I, I just hope we just have a great summer and people really take advantage of their passes and come and enjoy the beach because it's quite something to enjoy.
I agree. One other question, Carol, so from, from the Finance Committee. This is different than what we said, right? Because this says Fund 69 transfer not made until June. But we're saying we're, we're gonna wait a little longer, correct?
Well, yeah. We still have nine months left in the fiscal year. Anything can happen. Variance of the COVID virus could come back. We, we're not sure, but right now, as it looks, it looks very positive that things will continue. I just, I'm a little leery and I'm always a little conservative and that's why I take a look at it end of February, when our fiscal year ends.
But Carol, we're going to make a $300,000 transfer in July. That's what that's indicating, right? Is that what we just said? We just said at the Finance Committee Hall?
Yeah, that's going to be approved by the board in July. The 300 is really something that we talked about even in March for our budget meeting. But it's not yet reflected in these numbers at all.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Um, Carol?
Yeah.
Um, can you tell me what the EAV is?
Well, the last time I looked at it was 945 million, but the final extension for tax year 2020, which typically would be at the June meeting. It's a good thing you brought this up, Lisa.
I know.
Is that, um, we haven't received the final extension, so I can't tell you what it is right now.
Oh, okay.
Carol, what would the impact of the EAV be on the Park District and how would that change our operation?
Well, you know, Chris, unfortunately, I think that's going to be for John to answer when we get that final extension, probably in early July. I'm thinking because they delayed the installments this year from the penalty on March 1 to May 1. I think it's delayed the process a little bit. So, they might not come with the final extension until late July, early August, really, in all honesty. And I mean that very seriously.
I know.
Carol, can you tell me more about the EAV?
You know what? It's so funny because John and I were just talking about that this morning, really. And the levy process and looking at what the EAV has done over the last 25 years. So, look forward to some more good information coming forth from John. He's got, he's got the levy process down. Absolutely.
You guys should hear what her inner voice sounds like right now. Because her outer voice is like so professional and prepared, but her inner voice is saying something totally different. Because this is a bit of an inside joke for us. We're having a little bit of fun at her expense right now.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, but I can tell you this. While Carol is sitting there nice and cool and collected, thinking, thinking about EAV and speaking about EAV, I'm the, am I the only one that thinks that John is going to start like writing off sports like Facebook? Like, I'm like, yeah, I know the Cubs have had a really good run in the past few weeks. They beat the Cardinals and, you know, back to commercial now.
John's a Sox fan, so.
Good. I like you better. Nice, John.
Perfect. Yeah, I wouldn't, I could totally bring up ERA leaders, war leaders, whatever, whatever you guys want to hear about, EAV. ERA, same thing.
We'll talk about LaRusso after this.
Got it.
Yeah, he walks in the first day with a bobblehead, Sox bobblehead. I'm like, I didn't ask a question. I just, in this interview, I just asked him if he likes dogs. I usually ask him if your Cubs are a Sox fan. I forgot.
Smart man because he knows what the name of the baseball field is outside of Tacon.
Was.
Was, no longer.
Was, smart, yeah.
All right. Well, thanks, Carol, for that very informative answer.
Glad I could answer all your questions.
Okay, nothing more about the levy or EAV? We're done with that? Okay?
Yeah, we are done.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for the final time. Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
And we will move to the Executive Director's Report. Lisa Shepherd, what, what do you have for us?
Right, well, I, I, you know, gave all sorts of information on Carol and John in, in the board pack and I'll let you, just let you read that. But we're very excited to have John on our team. Carol has been working very closely with him. What his, his quote, and I'm going to use this forever. He's just like, I feel like I'm drinking out of a fire hose. So, I don't know if we're waterboarding him or what, but he says a lot of 20 years of information has soaked in, in, in time. And then on top of that, Liz left, but I'm happy to say that we already filled her position. And that, that new employee will start, uh, by the next payroll. So, that will be a great, so Carol will be with both of them for the last payroll. So, we're moving on that and we've already advertised for the human resources position. That might take a little longer to fill. But we're excited to have John on our team and here for Carol's last board meeting. So, welcome, John. And don't let this training scare you. We all say, we all feel like that when we first start and it'll be great. Audit, we've already talked about. I want to talk a little bit about 4th of July. As you know, we, we have, the board has decided not to do the fireworks this year. Our big, when we get people calling in asking why we're not doing and things, we just remind them it's a great opportunity to see the fireworks twice this year because Northbrook and Glenview decided to do it. But we just decided to let the Glencoe community have another opportunity on the Friday of Labor Day. So, they'll get two chances to watch the fireworks and we just remind everybody that a lot of big events have been pushed back. While, say, Lollapalooza is happening, it's pushed back. And while Summerfest is happening, it's pushed back and just, you know, erring on the side of caution. So, that's kind of our talking point. So, if you get asked that, those are some ideas for you. But we're excited to do the fun run and the preschool games and family games in the village is doing the parade. And those commissioners who said they can be in it, I'll get more information to you as we go, and then the steel drums. So, if you're in town, we hope you join us for all those fun activities. It was so exciting to do staff training in person. It, last year was the first time probably in 30 years that I did not do like a welcome to all the, all the either camp staff or aquatic staff in person. We had to do it. We didn't do one last year because of the pandemic. So, it was nice to welcome staff back. We did do lifeguards and managers or suffer from camp counselor. So, I still have to go meet with them, but it was so nice. It's so nice to hear the voice, all the activity in the community center again. And it feels like it's getting back to normal. As you know, we changed the regulations last week. So, no masks for anybody outside. So, that's camp kids, sports, anything like that. So, that we are very happy with that change. We found it would be very hard in this really hot weather to, to monitor the health of the kids and, and for them to have fun. But when they do come in the building, we ask them to wear their mask out of abundance of caution. I, I think it's a great compromise between the mask, no mask update. So, we'll continue to look at those protocols. They'll, they'll continue to change. They'll continue to change on Friday at 4:30 PM. And Bobby and I were talking that this time last year, it seemed like every Friday they changed regulations and we would be in the office till eight o'clock, eight or nine o'clock at night. So, those continue to happen and we continue to make those changes and meet and be ready for that. So, I put a lot of the updated protocols in the report also. Bobby, I'm going to throw it to you. Do you want to talk about a little bit about Glencoe Beach opening and anything else you want to say in your, in your report? Or anything about recreation and started camp?
Yeah, it's been, it's been great to see so much of the community outside and involved. And honestly, that probably the proudest moment of the last year for me was seeing the camp kids out, being kids again, playing kickball and laughing and running around and the amount of people who said that, that they didn't want to leave camp the first day. My kids as well, they didn't want mom to pick them up. So, it was just, it was awesome to see the community back recreating the way we used to. So, that was really refreshing. The beach, the beach has been going very well. We started with our daily fees. We've been averaging somewhere between 30 and, you know, 35 a day, paying the daily fees. So, we've about $6,000 to $7,000 worth of revenue come in on daily fees. And as, as Carol and Lisa both said, the pass revenue has continued to grow. We have had surprising amounts of high bacteria over the first two weeks. We've had a number of closures, which people have been very surprised with. So, we are looking into that and making sure that staff is doing the sampling correct. And we're looking if it continues, we're going to start maybe doing multiple samples a day just to see if there is a reason why we're having that. But, uh, you know, it's just one of those things. We've had three or four of them in the last two weeks and that's kind of odd for this time of year. So.
It is hotter than normal. So, we do get those a little bit more, yeah.
It is. And, and you know, with the, with the weather and the drought and all that sort of stuff, weird things can go on with the shoreline, so just.
Bobby, is, is the lake temperature warmer than average as well? I've noticed it, but I didn't know if it's like bona fide warmer than average, which could cause more people to come down?
It depends on the wind direction. Actually, it's a great question. So, there's basically a top layer that moves around the lake. So, it depends on the wind direction. So, the last week, it's been, it has been unseasonably warm. Earlier on, it was unseasonably cold. So, it all depends on where, where the flow is going. It is a bacteria count. So, so it's, it's based on, on certain things of the water. So, it's, you know, we keep doing the samples and, and hopefully the water stays a little clearer. It was good today. But just wanted to put it on your radar and start in case you get some questions because we've had a number of people call being frustrated about that. Not a lot we can do, so.
And it, it sometimes has to do with bird migrations and, you know, storms and things like that. So, it's, it's a, we are watching and we will do two-day tests if we have to. So, open it up faster.
I put a comment on it. I told people to sign up for the rain outline. I've had comments on it and I told people to sign up for the rain outline text if they haven't already because it's so helpful. And I'm sure that you guys put that in emails to pass holders, but maybe another reminder. Because I, it amazes me sometimes that people still don't know about it and then you don't go down there for the day, you just know.
There's an email about that going out tomorrow.
No.
And then the, the final update I have, we're, we're in the process of hiring a special events and community engagement manager. Uh, we've got a couple of good candidates. We're finalizing um interviews over the next week or so. So we're hoping to have some progress on that.
Very excited. Um, I have to tell you that Duke Park is very, very well attended. And I get today, it's, it's, needless to say, very, very popular, right? So we're, we are, if you go back there, I, I walked, I walked it today, walked down the trail and um, so if you want to feel like you're making an impact in people's lives, just do that once today and, and you're just like, it's warm fuzzies, you know?
I thought I missed a public event. Well, I did miss a public event, but I thought I missed a second public event because I was going to the gym and I was walking on the trail and there must have been like a thousand, 100 people there. And I was like, oh, there must be some event that I'm missing. And it was just a really hot day and the kids are loving the splash pads, so.
They're loving it.
Yeah, I, I really thought, I was like, is there an event going on? And then I was told there wasn't, so.
Yeah, no, we, we actually get a lot of birthday parties and we're getting a lot of the request, field requests for Sunken Park, which is just exciting. So people are using our parks. That's one benefit of COVID. Someone says, 10 years now, what was the impact of COVID on your industry? I must say, people discovered our parks again.
Yeah.
People discovered to play outside, to use the playground, to gather outside with friends. That's probably, that's a benefit and I hope that never changes. Uh, I really do because we need, we needed uh something to change from all the indoor screen time. And I think, you know, things have a way of working out for the best for, for everyone. So hopefully that's it. Uh, but Chris was wise enough to, um, we got a call from one of the neighbors about some unfortunate um incident in the bushes and he was wise, wise enough to immediately turn around, call me and say, I'm putting two porta potties in there. I'm like, okay, great idea. So Carol's laughing because um she will also tell you how many poop stories she's heard over her career. So so let's see how many things we can make her laugh at tonight. But um, that was one of them. But Chris, you want to give update, just a brief update on the Capitol projects?
Uh, sure. Uh, so stairs are progressing down at the uh North Beach. Um, we've got treads, we'll be wrapping up temporary railings. And, you know, with the goal of getting that staircase open mid next week, so things are going great. Uh, we will have the temporary railings and then they'll come out and do field measurements on the permanent railings. Likely takes six to eight weeks to get those railings manufactured and then they'll be placed on the stairs towards the end of the season. So our goal is to get the stairs open as fast as possible. Uh, Cawck Park is proceeding. We have been extremely challenged by the drought. Uh, so if you may, guys may know this, we are in the second worst drought recorded in history in Chicago since 1874. So typically by this time of year, we see about 15 inches of rain. This year, we've seen six. Uh, the lowest ever recorded is four and a half. So uh, we've been really impacted with our ability to grow grass in particular at Cawck. So we've had to spend a lot more time and effort than we initially had planned as far as that project has been concerned. But we're really pushing hard. Uh, we've got our, 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 our grass whisperer on the project. So um, we're really shooting hard for the 4th of July to have grass in front of that gazebo. At this point, we've really fought the weather on this one. So it, it, it's gonna come down to a photo finish here at the end on whether that area is gonna be accessible or not, just based on the climate. But uh, we, we're giving it every bit of effort that we can give it. I mean, daily watering, multiple fertilizer applications, multiple seed applications. I mean, I go out there and say sweet things to it every day. It is really just quite the effort to get the grass to grow in that park. So uh, the plaza is coming along as well. The masonry repairs have been made. Um, likely we'll see the irrigation system on the flower beds and the plantings before the 4th of July as well. Um, there was some delays based on overseas manufacturing of the lights, but um those will be coming when uh, after the 4th, but they won't impact the quality of the event. So beyond that, Lisa said, uh, we're wrapping up the punch list at Duke. There's just been a few things that needed to be repaired along the trail. Some areas of the crushed um aggregate material need to be replaced. Uh, some challenges at veterans, so working through those with the contractors. But um, on the whole, the projects are really progressing nicely. Um, and if anyone's had an opportunity to see the beach house, and so it was pointed this year and painted, it looks unbelievable. I mean, it is like something out of a painting and it really is very beautiful. So if you guys haven't had a chance to look at it, really do take a look at it. So um, thank you. Any questions?
Um, Chris, I'll buy you lunch if you go out there and sing to the grass.
You know what? If you don't get it to grow for the 4th of July, I'll sing and dance. I, I know most of the music from Frozen, so.
Oh, no. Okay. Any other questions for Chris? Thank you. All right. And I have to tell you, um, Erin's been equally busy with press releases and signage. It's her favorite thing to do is signage. So thank you, Erin, for all that extra effort um to make sure the community is informed of everything. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the 4th of July, we sent out a postcard that'll be, it went to the mailbox today. So you should be getting it every single resident of what we're doing.
I got it today. It's, it's a big postcard. It's more like a, like.
Like a flyer.
It's an eight and a half by 11, yeah. Yeah, it's eight and a half by 11. It's very nice. So it'll catch everybody's attention what we're doing, so. Any other questions for us?
I have two questions.
I'm ready.
Um, probably both for Bobby. We're game on. Um, again, I can't compare it to prior years because it's NA for 19, 13,000 last year, which I know we offer way fewer programs, but it's a pretty high number. It seems like it might be taken away from sports track and action class or kids have just aged out. But um, how many kids are signed up for that? Do you know?
It's an average of 30 a week. Um, so it's a, it's an expensive camp. It's about twice the price of our other camps. Um, and we're, you know, when we planned camps, we weren't 100% sure what we're looking at. Um, we were actually expecting a lot more demand outside of Glencoe. Um, we had some demand from last year, but a significant portion um of the camp is Glencoe residents. So there is a, obviously a huge demand for, for girls-only sports camps, so, which is really great to see. And we partnered with the school for the facility there. Um, so it's an average, I'd have to get the exact number of unique participants, but it's averaging about 30 girls per week in the camp. And it's an eight-week camp.
And that number is only, we're just getting a percentage of that, correct?
It's a contractual split. Yeah, we get uh 25%, they keep 75%.
Okay, thank you. And then I was wondering if we could do any like food trucks down by the beach. Um, if that's a possibility at some point. There's one that goes to a lot of farmers markets. It's like a cotton candy icy truck. Um, just wondering if that was a possibility.
Just on a Saturday or Sunday or for an event?
Or even, yeah, or, or both or just, yeah, or just on like a weekend and.
We can absolutely look into it. One, one of the challenges is that um a lot of those trucks actually can't make it down the bluff and make it back up. So we have to be careful with that. Um, but yeah, we can absolutely look into that. We do have some, some beach events planned. Um, and then they can tell you the um beach campout is seeing record numbers. So if you have friends that are interested in that, please sign up. Uh, it's looking to be a record-breaking year. But we can absolutely look into um a food, a food truck coming down.
A lot of times.
I wasn't even thinking of coming down, just.
On the top would work as well.
We just have to make sure they don't, a lot of them have minimums.
Yeah.
So we don't want to uh take the risk of meeting a minimum, but if we could find anybody that wants to come out with no minimum and just whatever they make, we could definitely check into that. But that is one of the hardest things to do. Is that they can go to a festival and be there eight hours guaranteed, how many people they do that. So that's what we're fighting with food trucks. It was like, oh, just call, they'll come. Well, they're not. They're actually very, you know, sometimes demand uh minimum. So, but we'll definitely check into it and keep up.
I don't want to.
Also allow people to um do DoorDash. And I know that Matt and Bobby were looking at some kind of mechanism where the DoorDash, if people could even, they can't drive down the bluff, but maybe we can leave a table up top or at the halfway house and meet halfway, like they go down to the halfway house and drop their food and customer comes up, but people are able to do that also. Okay. Good question, though. Anything else? Okay, well, that's it, that's it for me. Now we're on to action items.
Okay. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve resolution number 926 naming John Cutrera as the IMRF authorized agent for Glencoe Park District as presented.
Go move.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes, congratulations.
Commissioner Schneider?
He's, he's on mute. Bob, he's been on mute for a while now.
Yes.
Okay, President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve resolution number 927 bank depository relationship with BMO Harris Bank as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a, a quick one. Um, how long have we been with, with BMO? Does anyone know?
Carol, you're muted.
It was pre, at least 2000, if not pre 1991. Um, it's been a while.
I, I'm fine with it, but like maybe next year we take a look and see if there's someone else that can give us better service or rates or something if we haven't taken a look at it in a while. But I'm fine with it for this year.
We'll definitely do that, but let's let John get his feet wet before.
Yeah, no, no, totally. I'm not gonna pull a fast one on John. I, I don't, I don't think as much we're gonna get out of it, but I do think we should look at it.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, they have a second look. I, I agree with that, Michael. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Then roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to direct Executive Director Shepherd to sign the IDNR P, Park Grant Agreement as Presented.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the White and Company contract for the amount of $299,500 for design services for the Watts Recreational Center renovation as presented.
Go move.
Did I see that? I don't think I saw that in the package.
Yeah, it's in the package.
And we went over it last week.
The one that was on, the one that was online or was there a different one?
Yeah, it's on page 65.
Yeah.
And it's what was presented at the committee meeting last week.
Okay.
The last time.
A little bit more detail, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay, no other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual audit as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the salary ranges as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. Uh, is there any other business, Lisa Shepherd?
I do not have any other business.
Okay, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. Meeting.
29, nice job.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you very much. We'll hope to see you all next Friday at Carol's um retirement party.
Yep.
All right.